Good evening and welcome to the March 5, 2019, meeting of the Gilderland Board of Education. Would you all please silence your cellphones and rise for the pledge of allegiance? The first item on our agenda this evening is our high school student representative.
Hello.
Hi.
So, last Friday was the dodgeball tournament and normally we have like fifty teams, fifty-plus teams. It's a big thing, but this year we only had ten, so discussion for continuing that is up in the air right now. Spring sports started yesterday, as well as PSAT signups started today, and the actual SAT signups, the deadline was for last week. We're starting to finish up next year course selections, and that's important for juniors like myself, for figuring out what we want to do for next year, as far as taking classes here and getting college credits. The Gilderland Girl Auditions have started, which is like a singing competition, it's very popular. And last week, we had a school delay, which was also the day of our spring blood drive. There was a lot of people that were trying to get in, but overall, it was a good success. The new date for the Froschmore Formal, which is freshman and sophomore dance, is May 10, and posters for that will be put up around the school within the next week or two. Thursday was the bowling. They came in second place in Section 2, which was a good season for them. And to end, student government is working on a senior signing day, which is mainly for seniors, but open to all students, which they will come in and there'll be like a little sign-off altogether, it's like friends or anything that they want, and it's for people going to college or military or whatever they plan on doing in their life, and that's all I have today.
Great, thank you. And now we move on to public comment number one, and I will just remind everybody who signed up to keep the comments four minutes or less in accordance with our policy. And the first person we have is Nancy Field. Nancy Field?
Obviously, I'm not Nancy Field. I am Brian Savali, I'm Nancy Field's husband.
Okay.
Nancy didn't come tonight. Quite frankly, Nancy was just, she was so upset. As you know, we were the ones who wrote the emails that asked for more than one student to be sponsored at Tech Valley High, and I think, Dr. Wiles, I think your email says, "Well, it's still just one."
For now, at this point, yes.
For now, and I know there are twelve applicants, which means that there are at least some kids who feel that Tech Valley is their really, their only real option for an education. And so, there's gonna be a bunch of kids who are gonna be, I think, disappointed, to say the least. So, I know that maybe as the budget shakes out, you'll find some space for some additional students. Again, if you folk have not been to Tech Valley High School, you owe it to yourselves to go, see Jim Niedemeyer, see what they're doing over there. I think if you all went and saw it firsthand, I think you'd be more likely to sponsor more than a single student. There are districts out there who sponsor every student who applies because they understand what a phenomenal learning experience this is. It's not taking anything away from Gilderland. I went to public high school. I went to West Point, right? Public high school prepared me for West Point. But some people just aren't ready for a big school, and this is a big school. My school was this big. Some kids just can't do this. Our daughter's one of them. So, as you work through the budget, as you find, like I said, I think it's three cents on a thousand dollars, three cents on a thousand dollars to send a kid to Tech Valley High, of the hundred million dollar budget. When you think of that, and when you look at where some extra money may lay, please consider sending more children to this school. It is a phenomenal learning experience. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person we have is Jen Romano.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jen Romano. I have three elementary school children in the district. I spoke at a meeting back last July of 2017 regarding several inexpensive and realistic safety, security measures that could significantly improve our playgrounds. My objective tonight is just to revisit those ideas, update you on any progress, and once more, offer myself as a resource to our district in any capacity. I live, we live in a time when we cannot promise our children will be safe in school. Safer is all we can strive for, and it should be our top priority. I've communicated to the board a few times that our elementary schools require redesigned supervision strategies, more exterior cameras with internal split-screen monitoring, visible surveillance signs upon entry, two-way radios and whistles for teachers while they are outside. I was aware of the supervision improvements, having a better focus on sightlines after fall, after the first time I addressed the board. I noticed a split-screen monitor of all our cameras go up in the front office. For these positive changes, I am ever so grateful. Our facilities director, Mr. Noonie, updated me on the status of the other items. First, let me say that Mr. Noonie is a wonderful resource. His passion to do the right thing is inspiring, and I am grateful for him and his efforts. To put the camera issue into perspective, at least this half of the room has three cameras in it. In July of 2017, our school only had three external cameras. Tonight, our school still has three external cameras. I suggested that we add two more on the north and south sides of the building, and I'm happy to report that Mr. Noonie informed me that our school will be getting those much-needed cameras, hopefully, soon. He also mentioned other schools needing additional cameras will get them as well. From articles I've read online, some of you may believe that cameras are only good after the fact, after a crime or an incident, but respectfully, I have to disagree. Given the technology that exists, an actively-monitored split-screen of cameras can allow someone remotely watching to alert the authorities to potential harm and give our children those critical seconds they need to get to safety and await emergency responders. Surveillance sign is another relatively inexpensive measure, which provides a deterrent to crime and bad behavior. Anyone on school grounds needs to clearly know their actions are being monitored by surveillance equipment. Retail parking lots often use signs to keep people in check, and I strongly feel our school should do the same. Mr. Noonie said he would bring this to his safety team and consider. Two-way radios and why they're important. They give teachers the ability to contact the school nurse or the front office to get help faster without leaving the playground. That help could be from other staff, administrators, emergency responders. Cellphones, even if you have good reception and reading glasses on, aren't always useful during stressful situations. Panic seizes up our motor functions. It affects our fingers and hands, and sometimes our speech. A radio can offer an alternative way to help without cumbersome pass codes and dialing. Some radios, much like the Motorola ones that Albany County will be rolling out in three other districts, one being Ravina, can actually contact 911 dispatch at the push of a button, allowing direct communication to emergency responders. Now, please note, I'm not suggesting these radios right now, as they are costly, but keep that technology in mind for our future. Mr. Noonie kindly gave our school several two-way radios for teachers to share amongst themselves during recess. However, I have not checked with our principal to see if those radios are being used, if teachers like them, or if they need more of them to make the sharing easier. Again, having these radios is a step in the right direction, and I am thankful. When a teacher brings twenty-plus students to recess, oftentimes alone, they have something to alert their students when it comes time to come inside. One teacher might have a bell, one teacher might have a tambourine, another a drum. But compound that across multiple grades on the playground simultaneously, and it might be a little confusing. So, what if Teacher X sees something that warrants an alert to all students? Maybe a whistle for emergency use would be an inexpensive, extremely loud tool that cuts through the distance sharply. A whistle by its very nature signals immediate attention. It's easy enough to clip onto an existing lanyard or slip on prior to recess. Please note, I'm not saying to replace bells, tambourines, and drums. I'm just simply saying, maybe we should also think about giving teachers a whistle as well. I've asked Mr. Noonie to tabletop a recess emergency scenario to explore whether these measures I'm speaking of would give our youngest students more time to find a teacher and get to safety. I ask each of you, this weekend, if you could take twenty minutes to visit one of our playgrounds and visualize for yourself some of the things I've brought to your attention over the past couple of years. And if you think whistles might be a good addition to our playgrounds for stopping altercations from afar or warning everyone of imminent danger, then you have my pledge to provide one for every elementary school teacher within the district. As taxpayers, we can make a difference by voting yes to the next capital budget. However, if the budget does not pass again, we need to start a dialogue and invite those of us in our community that wish to help make our schools safer, the opportunity to join in on the conversation. Our children spoke out last year with more bravery and conviction than most adults I know could ever muster. Our children said enough, and when my children asked me, "What did you do, mommy?" during those times, I can remind them of the march we participated in and all the other ways I have attempted to make their voices heard and keep everyone safer. Tonight, you know, speaking for me is not really a pleasant experience, but it's a necessary one. So, again, my offer stands to assist this effort in any capacity, whether it be through advocacy funding, fundraising, research, benchmarking, safety standards, or idea generation. And I just want to leave you with one last idea, a fundraising concept. I'm calling it a parent's prom miss, emphasis on prom. Parents are always looking for a fun night out, and frankly, who in this room wouldn't mind a prom do-over? So, what if we organized a prom, parents' prom gala event? It could be held in the high school gym. There are some talented students that may want to DJ or play live music, sell tickets to parents, administrators, teachers. Our teens could even help plan and chaperone it, and it could be the perfect way to gross them out and also show them that there isn't really anything we wouldn't do for them. We could have local businesses and folks donate goods and services for silent auctions. I think it could be a fun, unique advertising idea, and I can see it capturing a lot of publicity. The proceeds could go towards the school's mental health initiatives, which are every bit as important to our children's safety as any piece of security equipment. So, if anyone tonight wants to discuss any of my ideas or wants to brainstorm with me on anything, again, you know how to contact me, and I hope you do. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now we move on to the superintendent's draft budget presentation. Marie and Neil.
All right, we'll brighten up the room with our... Maybe when I hit the next slide, it'll get a little bit brighter. So, good evening, everyone. It's great to see everyone here tonight. The purpose of our presentation tonight is really to share the first draft of our budget for the 2019-2020 school year. It doesn't seem possible that we're even saying the words 2020, but here we are. So, we have four parts to our talk tonight. Mr. Sanders and I will tag-team the presentation. The first part, we'll talk a little bit about our priorities and the process that we use to develop our budget. We'll talk a little bit about the financial context for our budget development this year. Then, we'll summarize those changes that we're anticipating for 2019-2020, and then we'll wrap up with some review of the next steps in the budget development process. So, those are our four big areas for tonight. So, when we begin the budget process, we always begin with, "So, what is it that we care about? What are our priorities?" And you know, we spend a lot of time trying to flesh out, "What is it that we," and when I mean "we," I mean our entire school community, "what do we care about?" And then, we spend a lot of time thinking about our students. What do they need? Not only, you know, how many students will we serve, but what are the particular characteristics of those children that we will be serving next year, academically, socially, emotionally, and so on? And then, the tricky part of all of this, because we're really quite good at saying what we value and what we'd like to do for our students, but we have to balance that with a whole notion of what we can afford now, and then the bigger question for us is, "What can we sustain over time?" We certainly don't want to be adding things that next year, because we're in uncertain financial times, we need to take them away. So, that's the push and pull of the work that we do in the several months that we work on this process to put the budget together. You know, and bottom line, this is why we're here. Our students are our mission, and we focus on what it means to serve them every single minute of every single day. So, here it is, our mission statement. You know, I'd like to point everyone to a couple of words here. I love the word "inspire." We really do want to inspire our students to love learning and to be engaged in learning, and when we talk about students, we talk about all of them, each and every last one, four thousand eight hundred and seven of them. Every single one of those children come to school each day, and we have the obligation to prepare them for whatever is beyond their schooling experience. And we do that in the context of our mission statement. We work together, and we work together to create a great place for kids to come to school in order to be ready for their future. That's our vision in a nutshell. So, in order to flesh out our priorities, we've been doing a number of things over the last several months to get at, "What do we care about?" So, the first slide I have here is really the summary of the work the board did in the late fall, end of November, early December. We might recall, we had all of our board members complete an open-ended survey that basically said, "What are the things you care the most about as we contemplate the development of our spending plan for next year and as we think about the future as well?" And we got a very long list, and we sent that list back to the board members and asked them to essentially rank or prioritize the ideas of all of the members of the board. And we came up with a very colorful sheet. Board members will remember it in late December. It looked like this, and the ones at the top of the page, which I'll show you on the screen, are ones that every single board member said were either their very top priority or a high priority. So, in looking at the summary of their work, we have these kind of three levels of priorities. So, on the far left, the very top priorities, these will not be a surprise, because if you come to our board meetings, you know, we talk about these things a lot. We care a lot in Gilderland about class size, and we like those numbers as low as we can possibly make them. We care deeply about mental health and the mental health of our students. We care a lot about opportunities for students, and that becomes manifested in having a wide variety of high school electives. We care about technology. We also are caring about the future, and one of the things that came up was our visioning for the future. And you can see, as we work our way across the chart, right at the top, that second level of our high priorities, safety and security, you see our prep for our later start time, and I'll be reporting on that a little bit later tonight. Another priority, though, is keeping our taxpayers in mind, and we're all called upon to do that, and to, whenever possible, offer relief from taxes. Enrichment is here. Full-time teaching assistance in grade K and 1 continue to be a priority. And then, I'll just round out. The third highest were professional development, consideration around substance abuse initiative, ongoing support for our students with disabilities, ENL, and our focus program. So, you will see these and other themes weaving their way through our presentation tonight. In early January, we also, Dr. Singleton and I, did a presentation to kind of update our board and our community about the state of our district. What do we look like right now? What are the challenges that we face? What's the work that we're doing? And I just want to hit a couple of these bullet points to remind you, because the state of our district now is one of those things we use to help us make tough decisions when we're allocating resources. So, just a couple kind of basics. One is our enrollment. That is the first conversation when we begin the budget. And if you go back from, to 2008, 2009, and flash forward to the present, for all of those years, we had a gentle decline of enrollment. But projected for next year, and if you look in your appendices for today's presentation, you'll see that in the next couple of years, we are moving back up again. We will be growing again. That's an important thing for us to know as we plan for the future. The next bulleted item has huge implications for us. Back in '08-'09, just under six percent of our students received free and reduced lunch. We're now at nineteen percent, and I anticipate that number continuing to climb. Our population of students who are English, for whom English is a new language, was 1.8% back in '08-'09. It's four percent now, and that translates into 302 students speaking forty-one different languages. And we are a far more diverse school. Back in '08-'09, fifteen percent of our population were students of color. We're at twenty-five percent now. In the state of our district, we also talked a lot about students with disabilities, because we have been working for the last five years on how we best serve all students, but particularly students who have disabilities. And you can see, our classification rate is currently 12.5%. State average is 11%, so we're fairly close to that. The next bullet, I think, is telling. This is data from 2016-2017, when we have comparables, but we spent $18,723 per pupil. Similar, other, we're considered a low-need district, spent $26,819. So, those are similar districts in terms of size and the relative wealth of their community. You also have to factor in, those would include school districts on Long Island and other places in the state where costs are higher. But even statewide, when you look at it, if you average all schools in New York State, they're spending quite a bit more per pupil than we are, at $23,361. We get the job done, though. When you look at our graduation rates, they hover at about ninety-five percent each year, and that's going back to 2008, 2009, and then continuing. And then, overall, when you look at how our students perform, we are equal to or better than the average of our suburban council counterparts, and we far surpass the averages of students statewide. A little bit about our inclusive practices. This first bullet is a benchmark for just how inclusive are you? It measures the percentage of students who spend eighty percent or more of their day in a general education classroom. We had, that number for us back in 1617 was seventy-nine percent, and that is far and above our counterparts in, far and above New York State. So, we're doing an outstanding job there. And after establishing our co-taught courses at GHS, we're now in our third year. We continue to have great attendance. Students are coming to school. Our discipline referrals are dramatically dropping, fifty percent down for referrals with students with disabilities, fifty percent in the number of students with one or more infractions. Our student achievement on Regents exams has improved for our students with disabilities. And this last bullet, I just bragged about this in a room full of superintendents in the last couple of days when I was at the NISCAS conference. We have a twenty-five percent increase in the number of students with disabilities who are pursuing a third year of mathematics, and everyone just looked at me. They couldn't believe it. That's a huge accomplishment. Also, in our state of the district, we talked a lot about this new federal law. Not so new, actually, but we're finding our way around it, called ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act. And I mention it here today because you will see some proposals, as we foreshadowed back in early January, that reflect new expectations and new opportunities through ESSA. ESSA is encouraging school districts, and I think rightly, to support new programs that are designed to build and reward the leadership capacity of teachers. So, we know teachers have tremendous leadership capacity, and we see it every single day. Finally, we have a federal law that actually is saying, "Yes, let's promote this." So, you will see how we're doing that in this proposal. Here in Gilderland, we want to design collaborative, teacher-led, professional development opportunities that will include teacher leadership and instructional coaching, and we'll do that to move away from the stand-and-deliver kind of professional development to job-embedded, hands-on, the kind that truly makes a difference in the classroom. So, I would be remiss in not sharing a little bit about how we asked our community to weigh in on priorities, and right at the end, on live TV, we launched our first thought exchange to ask the community about, "What do you think we do well? Or what do you value about our district, and what can we do better to prepare our students for the future?" We had, I think overwhelmingly robust participation. Eight hundred and twenty-four parents, faculty, staff, and students, as well as community members, participated. They shared 784 thoughts and completed 25,000 ratings. And if you haven't been on our thought exchange, you can look at the results of this just by going to our website. At the bottom of the website, there's a news story, and you can click on them. You can read all 784 thoughts and see how they were rated and see what matters to our community. Those thoughts and priorities are reflected in the decisions you'll see later this evening. And I just put up here some of the major themes that emerged from the thought exchange. Remember, in the past, when we would do a survey, we figured out what the themes were and asked you about them. In Thought Exchange, we just open the question broadly, and you tell us what the themes are. And so, you can see the topics that came up the most, and the scale on the Y-axis there is the number of thoughts that were generated about each of these. And I had a whole slide where I shared some of the top thoughts. I just want to share a couple with you, especially around quality teachers and quality education, because that was the number-one thought and the number-one priority in the entire exchange, and here was the number-one statement around the number-one thought. And it said, "Effective, well-trained, well-supported, kind, thoughtful teachers and staff are essential to our students." And, you know, I just think that's so worth sharing, that when eight hundred and something people come together, that's the number-one idea that comes across, and that says, "We are in line, we are in tune with our community around our mission." So, more to come on Thought Exchange, for sure. So, our planning process, it feels like we've been working on the budget four months, because we have. We started in October, and that's when we go back and we review the decisions we made last spring. As you know, we decide what we're going to spend our resources on months and months before the students show up for school in September, and we want to take stock. Did we get it right? And if we didn't, can we adjust? But we do, during that review, a detailed analysis of student needs. We look at enrollment. We look at student academic, social, and emotional needs and how we may support those. And we also keep in mind the priorities of our community, so that we have at the forefront robust, varied opportunities for learning both inside and outside of the classroom. And then, we try to make decisions about what kinds of pluses and minuses will show up in this budget in light of, and here come the challenges that come our way, what is essentially a flat foundation aid and per-pupil formula for Gilderland. We got $35,000 in additional foundation aid, which is on a hundred-million-dollar budget, essentially nothing. We know we work under the parameters of a tax levy limit, which is quite low this year for us, and Neil will talk more about that. And every year, we have higher costs. This year, we actually have some areas where we have some lower costs, and that's created what is probably one of our more, less stressful years than another. Let me put it that way, or you can tell me later if it's less stressful. So, overall, what you can expect in the next several slides here, this is a budget that incorporates savings from lower costs from some of our expenditures. The retirement system contributions are lower this year. Our health insurance costs are lower this year, and our debt payments are lower this year. All of those are big areas of the budget, so when there's changes there, it has a big impact, and those were all positive impacts for us. I am happy, as I can be, to say that this budget preserves all existing programs and services for students. We're not having any difficult conversations about what students will not have next year. And it includes some additions to programs and services based on student needs and on district priorities. And lastly, we are very sensitive to our obligations to remain within the tax levy limit, and so, what you will see tonight is within that tax levy limit. So, the passage of this particular proposal would require a simple majority of voters for approval. So, with all of those introductory remarks, I'm gonna turn the podium over to Mr. Sanders, who will tell you some more.
Thank you, Dr. Wiles, and good evening. As Marie said, we'll be talking more about the specifics of the budget in this particular segment of tonight. segment tonight. First, I'd like to start with an update on where we are with the 2018-19 budget. It was approved back in May, as Marie had indicated, almost $101 million. It was approved by a 71% plurality. We had a budget increase of 2.48% and an estimated tax rate increase of 1.97%. That actually was 1.78 when we got to the final development of the tax rate. In terms of enrollment, we have about 4,800 students. We have 922 employees, and about 70% are full-time and about 30% are part-time. And we have a little more than half of our staff that are teachers, and then we also have support staff and administrators rounding out the total for 922. Terms of our enrollment data, at the elementary level, we've had some growths. We have about 90 additional students. At the secondary level, we have a reduction of six, so overall, for this year, we have 84 additional students. Each fall, we do a rollover budget calculation. It's a projection, and we try to use information that we have available at that time about things that we know and a lot of things that we don't know, and try to estimate. But it does give us a benchmark as to what we're facing in the year to come in terms of the budget scenario and where we might meet the land come this time of year. So as you can see, overall, we had looked at expenses increasing about $2 million. We had revenues declining about a half a million dollars. And it really resulted in a tax levy increase of about $2.5 million that we were looking at at that time. Good thing is, we're going to share a much different picture of that tonight than what we talked about back in the fall or had projected at that time. We do have a number of factors influencing the budget of significance. On the revenue side, as Marie had mentioned, foundation aid, very miniscule. We got the lowest amount that you could get from school districts across the state. Our increase was 0.25%. That's the absolute minimum that any school district could receive, and we received the absolute minimum, so that's about $36,000. We do have a reduction in expenditure-based aids. Primarily, that's due to building aid. So again, as Marie had already mentioned, we have some debt that is expiring, that's rolling off. Attached to that is state aid, so when that debt goes away, we also have a reduction in the corresponding aid with that. In terms of our expenditures, we do have some increases. Biggest one is private transportation contracts. As you know, we have a fleet of buses, and we have drivers, but we go a lot of places. So we have schools that we go to throughout Albany City, over in Detroit. We go out to East Greenbush and that area, Skodak and Maple Hill. We go west, and we go as far east, actually, as Massachusetts. So we not only do runs within the district, but we do runs to private parochial schools and special education placements surrounding us and even out of state. So that has required us to utilize private contractors more than we ever had in the past, can be more efficient for us, and as you can imagine, trying to get to all of these places that are in a geographic location in a timely fashion is difficult. So we did need to augment our services this year by doing a number of private transportation contracts, and we expect to have to continue that again next year. Our BOSI's, our special education services, seeing an increase overall in that category of expense, about $250,000. We are looking at an increase in a refund of real property tax of about $200,000. This is for tax challenges, so as businesses and residents get their tax bills, they have the right to challenge those, and could see a reduction in their property tax bill that would necessitate a refund. What we found from the last experience, when the town of Gilderland did a revaluation and looking at the history, in the year of the reassessment or reevaluation, tax refunds increased by three times. So we currently have refunds of about $115,000 this year. We're projecting that we could see the same scenario, so three times that. So we currently budget about $115,000. This would get us in the $300,000 range, again, based on prior experience that we've had with the reassessment. Terms of debt payments, we're looking to shed about $1 million there. That was related to work that was done at the middle school back in 2006, so we borrowed at that time, and now that debt is being paid off. In terms of the teachers' retirement system, there's a rate that's applied to teachers' salaries, and that rate is set by the teachers' retirement system each year, affected a lot by the stock market and how investments do. And this is a year where there's a decrease in the rate, goes from 10.62% down to 8.86%. And given salaries, that can end up being a significant amount of money when that rate is reduced. Terms of health insurance, something unprecedented. I don't think I've ever said that we have health insurance, or stood here and said that we've had health insurance expenses decreasing in any of my years in this business. We have a health insurance committee of representatives of all the bargaining units within the district. We meet each year, and we talk about health insurance. And we've made changes over the course of the year to plans that have affected all employees. And this year, there were some significant changes made to the plans that resulted in some increases in copays and some in terms of services, but overall, will result in savings. So it's a benefit to employees, and it's a benefit to the school district, and it's significant. We did have very good experience. We would have had relatively low rates anyway, but we have actually a reduction in the amount that we're going to spend on health insurance next year. Then finally, transfer to capital fund. If you watch some of our meetings, you know we're talking about radon mitigation efforts here at the high school. We did some testing. We need to do some remediation efforts. That $130,000 will allow us to do those remediation measures that we need to undertake here at the high school. Terms of the tax levy limit calculation, a couple positives, and I'll talk about them a little bit more, but there's a piece called the Tax-Based Growth Factor. That's going up about $340,000, and that's a positive impact. And payment in lieu of taxes, in terms of the tax levy limit calculation, we're looking at about $260,000 impact, and it's on the negative side. So we are going to get $260,000, not through the tax levy, but through a payment, but it does have a negative impact in the calculation. Terms of the executive budget proposal for state aid, that's the only thing we have to work with at this point. The governor released that back in the middle of January, and until the state legislature adopts a budget, we won't have any better information to work from concerning state aid. The two on this chart that are most relevant to us are foundation aid, and that's the minimum amount of aid that follows each student. Overall, statewide, it was $288 million increase, but again, we're seeing only about $36,000 here in Gilderland. The other one is expense-based aids, and these are aids that we get that are tied to expenses. And as we talked about, building or construction is one of those. If we have debt, there's building aid that goes along with that. We also have BOSI's aid on our BOSI's expenditures. We have some aid related to students with disabilities as well. So transportation is another area. So as we spend money, the more we spend, the more we get back, but you also are spending money to get money back. So overall, total aid package was $956 million across the state. Talk a little bit about the tax levy limit calculation. The formula's been in existence for several years now, an eight-step formula. The vast majority of the expenses are limited to 2% for 2019, '20. And really what this is, the whole formula is designed to come up with a threshold number. So if you stay below that threshold, you need 50% of your voters to have a pass budget. If you exceed the threshold, you need, let's call it the supermajority, or at least 60% of your community to support a budget in order for it to be considered passed. And then ultimately, it's defeated, and usually it would be twice, putting it up once, getting it, having it defeated, and then putting it up again and having it defeated a second time. There can be no increase to the tax levy. So whatever you have in the current year has to suffice for the following year, and that is a significant hurdle to overcome. Terms of the calculation itself, let's walk you through this very quickly. We start with our prior-year tax levy, so that's a tax levy that's currently in place in 2018, '19. We have what's called a Tax-Based Growth Factor. That's a number that comes from the state and really represents new construction, 1.0047. We've been very fortunate to always have a positive number here, so in some years, even more significance than this, but we do have ongoing construction within our school district, and that is helpful in terms of the formula. So that adds about $340,000 in the formula. Then we add payment in lieu of taxes. We have one of those, and that's $73,570. That gets us to our next line that talks about capital expenditures net of state aid. So these are things, payments that we have for either buses or debt, and we have to take the aid out of it. But basically, what they're doing is they're saying that we're exempting those from the formula. So the state is recognizing, we need to do, we need to buy buses, we need to do improvements to our building, and that we shouldn't be subject to the 2% or less cap for those types of expenses. So basically, it's backing it out of the formula. That gets us our adjusted prior-year tax levy. Get to apply the growth factor, which can be anywhere from 0% to 2%, but no more than 2% this year. Again, we're fortunate, it's 2% based on the CPI for the preceding calendar year. That gets us to our tax levy limit of just $72.2 million. It's about $1.4 million above the starting number. Then we have a negative, so we have to subtract from that next-year payment in lieu of taxes. So that's that $260,000 that I talked about, so it does have a negative impact as we're working our way up to our maximum threshold amount. And then we have capital expenditures net of state aid, so that gets added back in, so we took it out of the formula before, bypassed it, we need to add it back in for next year at the back end of the formula. That gets us to our $73.4 million, or about $1.1 million increase, and that equates to 1.52% maximum that our tax levy can increase next year. Our projected budget for next year, $102,61,240. That's a percentage increase of 1.13, and our estimated tax impact, based on the budget that we're proposing, is 1.49%. Want to talk a little bit about the reassessment. We know what's happening. We know that letters were sent out recently, so the town and the community has been informed, at least, of what's been going on in the town of Gilderland. We have three other towns within the district. They are not doing reassessments, it's just Gilderland. But try to, want to talk a little bit about some context for that, because what typically will happen in a reassessment is oftentimes, housing values will go up, and there's sometimes a false assumption that says, if my assessment goes up, taxes stay the same, I'm going to pay a lot more in school taxes than before. And really, what happens in these situations is, as assessments increase, tax rates tend to go down. So we'll just walk through this example. This is data from the last reassessment in 2005, and starting with what happened in the year prior, 2004, and then what was the impact when actually the reassessment went into effect. So we start with an equalization rate. It was about 81.75%. So that's the percentage of value. So based on 100%, basically, the state was saying you were valuing at only 80% of the true value of properties within the district. And the reassessment will move that to 100%, as it will this year. At that time, the school tax rate in 2004 was a little over $23 per thousand, but again, properties are only assessed at 80% of their value. Once the reassessment took place, now we have properties at full value. What it does then is you have a broader tax base, and the tax levy, the amount the school district needs to raise, isn't going up by that much. The assessment is much larger than the taxes that we need to collect on an annual basis, the increase of that from a year-to-year basis. So when that occurred, what happened is, actually, the tax rate went down significantly. Again, we have that broader tax base and only a small change to the tax levy. So that was a $4.95 decrease, about 21% decrease overall in terms of the tax rate. A little example, and this is just a number I made up, $250,000 home. If you had that home and you were assessed at $23.30, your tax bill would have been $5826. That same home with the lower tax rate of $18.35, you would have paid taxes of $4,588, or about $1,200 less under that scenario. But housing values probably increased, so put a little note at the bottom to try to say, how far could you go with that before you saw actually an increase in your taxes? And under this particular scenario, you could have your house assessed up to 27% higher and get that value another $67,500 higher before the 2005 tax bill would have exceeded the 2004 tax bill. So I think you can see, overall, as assessments increase, that a larger assessment also drives the tax rate down, and that's what should occur in this scenario again this year. Terms of some of the specifics about the development of the 2019, '20 budget, in terms of expenditures in large categories, see category name got eliminated there, but that's salaries, that's supposed to be there. As you know, we're a people business, significant part of our expenses is for the staffing that we had, that 922 staff that we've talked about in the beginning. Just a few other categories here as well, so I'll do it off my handout. Interfund transfers, very small, .4%. Debt service, which we just talked about a little bit, going down, 5.8%. BOSI's, 4.9%. And then the larger chunk here, the first one, 7.2% for contract services, and at the bottom, equipment supplies at 2.7%. Terms of the categories, the broad categories that we have overall within the budget, you can see we have changes overall in many of these categories. We talked a little bit about employee benefits. We have some things falling on the right side of that. That's going to decrease from budget, on a budget basis, from year to year, about $900,000. Other ones, contract services going up $1.2 million. BOSI's services dropping down about $340,000. Debt service, $930,000 overall. Terms of the revenue budget, our local sources, we're going to have a little increase there, about $146,000. A lot of that's due to rising interest rates and money that we earn, that we invest. State aid and Medicaid, again, we've talked about this a little bit. We're losing some aid. Foundation aid isn't increasing, we're losing some aid in terms of building aid. And then property taxes going up $1.2 million. So overall, budget's going up $1.135 million. We talked a little bit about fund balance and reserves. This is the amount of money that we have set aside for contingencies in case we have some bad years, and we've had some bad years, as you know, going back to 2007, '08. The state had a lot of financial difficulties, withholding of aid, and at that time, we had to do things to our savings in order to balance our budget and make sure that we could operate programs. We're still laying off a lot of staff at that time, and we needed to have a way to mitigate that, and it was from our savings. So you can see, we got down below $6 million for several years, and then we started to climb back up as things got better financially across the state. But even as we move up, if we look at our suburban council counterparts, we are still relatively low in terms of our overall savings that we have available to help us through some sort of economic downturn or crisis. You can see, we're second from the left, about 12.9%, second lowest within the suburban council, average is probably in that 17.5% range. So we still are low in terms of fund balance, and that's something we need to be mindful of going forward, especially as the state has come out now and said that they have a revenue gap of about $2.3 or $2.6 million, or billion, however that looks at a particular point in time from tax revenues. So the state is looking ahead, saying they will have to look at some of their reserves, which the controller said isn't adequate at this point. So we're not much different in that regard either. We need to have those, we need to have some savings in hand that we can draw upon when we need it. Terms of the tax levy limit calculation, can I mention already that we're at 1.49%? The maximum we can spend is 1.52 and stay within the tax levy limit threshold that would require a simple majority vote. So we're about $19,500 below the tax levy limit right now. And then finally, we wanted to just remind you of voting history here in Gilderland, so we've gone back six years. You can see our participation rate from the community has climbed from mid-'60s to lower, over to mid-'70s. Our voting number of voters has risen and fallen over time, so it's gone up, it's gone down, it's risen again, gone down. But we just wanted to give you the percentage of votes, history of how the public turns out, and then some of the data we have in terms of the tax levy increase and the tax levy limit and the spread between those two. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Wiles.
Thank you, Neil. The next several slides will highlight some of the recommended changes for the upcoming year. And the first thing we're going to start with is our elementary class sections. And I probably should not use the word "changes" in this, because we made a lot of adjustments in terms of actual class sections across the five buildings, but there, at this point, is no net change to the total number of sections in elementary buildings, districts. is no net change to the total number of sections in elementary buildings district-wide. But there's quite a bit of movement in there. For your reference, in your appendix materials, this is appendix B. But there's a lot going on in the slide, let me just hit some of the highlights. So we have all five of our elementary buildings broken out by grade. The top number in each of the boxes is the class size average as of right now. These things, especially in K, do move over time, but as of today, this is the average. If there is a plus one or a minus one underneath that number, it means that we've either added or subtracted a section from the current year to next year. And a lot of that is projected on our class size projections. An interesting one, one that prompted us to do a big push for kindergarten enrollment is Gilderland Elementary School. We actually preliminarily eliminated a section for next year, and the class size is still only 19.5 children. We only had 65 kindergarten students signed up for Gilderland Elementary, and we were expecting over 100. So, so we actually did a big push on our website for enrollment of kindergarten children. If you see an asterisk next to a number, this is a class grade where we are at the upper limit of our class size guidelines, and you'll see at the bottom, there's an asterisk that says "under review." So we keep a close eye on these shifting numbers between now and budget adoption, and actually all the way through the spring and the summer, as children come and go, we may or may not need to add another section. You'll also notice on this page that we have continued to build five unassigned positions into the budget, so that if we do need to create a section, we have the FTEs available for us. But overall, if you look at the average of all grades across the district, we are in pretty good shape. Kindergarten averages, and you can see on the far right, are 20.6, same thing for, actually it's the same for kindergarten first and second grade, and then we're at 22, 22 for grade three, 20.4 for grade four, and again, 20.4 for grade five. But we will keep a very close eye on this, we have a chart going, or will have one going soon, where we'll watch really by the week where students are coming and going in our class size sections. The next chart is much simpler. In the middle school, grade six, seven, and eight, we're sticking with our current configuration of 14 sections for each of those grades, and you can see the average class sizes for our incoming classes next year. Grade six, 24.2, grade seven, 25.1, and grade eight, 25.9. So here are some of the other changes that we are proposing for next year. And if you see two boxes that are shaded the same color, it means that the two ideas are connected, they go, they go together. And that's the case for this first pair here. Our special education department is proposing the creation of a new social development class for grades one through three, and this is what we would call an 8-1-3 classroom, that's eight children, one teacher, and three TAs. And you can see that under the FTE implications, it would include adding a teacher, adding a TA, and a point for psychologist or social worker, and you can see the costs associated with that. And this is to serve some of our youngest students who are presenting with significant behavioral and emotional needs, and we want to do this in district. This class would serve children who would typically be sent out of district, because we currently don't have the resources or the program to support them. And Mr. Sanders referenced the, the number of bus runs we have going to Rensselaer County and elsewhere. Often it is to send children to classrooms where there are many, many supports to meet their needs. This proposal would be paired with the return of two and possibly three students who are currently in outside placements. So we are hopeful that in creating our own program, we can bring some children home. We also have some students who are currently here for whom we would otherwise be looking at an outside placement. So if we bring the class here, students stay close to home, they're with their peers, they're in their own school district, and I believe we can do a nice job serving their needs right here. So that is a pretty significant proposal, but without a significant cost impact for the district going forward. The other piece at the elementary level, we continue to have, as I pointed out earlier, growing numbers of students who, for whom English is a new language, and we need to do a little bit of an increase over at Altamont Elementary School. This point too is currently filled out of our unassigned pool, and we need to continue that into next year. The next slide is about our purchase of a new mathematics program. Dr. Singleton has spoken with us in the fall, and I think he's going to provide an update shortly today, about our need to transition away from our math program that was called Go Math, and our adoption of a new math program to align with the next-gen standards called Investigations. So over the course of the last several months, we've had teachers piloting a variety of programs, trying to find the one that is the best fit for us. And Damian's been doing a ton of homework to see the best way to purchase this, because you can buy these programs in yearly increments, two years, three years, five years, six years. We have opted to go for the six-year program, which has the biggest price tag in the moment, but is by far the most cost-effective way to purchase the program. We will need the materials for the next six years, no matter what. You can see the note at the bottom, if we purchase these on a six-year plan, it is $26 per child per year, compared to $39, almost $40 per child per year if we only bought the three-year plan. So while this is a significant purchase at $370,000, it is by far the most cost-effective way to go about this purchase. I'm going to move on to the middle school. There too, we have a growth in our population of ENL students. 20 new ENL students are projected for next year. We currently have two ENL teachers in that building, it is just simply not enough to meet their needs in any appropriate way, we need to increase that by 1.0 FTE, and that is why that proposal is there. The next two, both shaded blue, and they go together. As you know, we've been implementing the co-teaching model at the high school over the last three years. We did grade nine, grade 10, this year we're at grade level, grade 11. Next year, we would like to reach down to the element, to the middle school, sorry, because we already are working in the elementary, to give our eighth-grade students the same kind of experience they'll expect when they come into ninth grade with a co-teaching model. In order to do that, it requires the addition of three FTEs, teachers who will be co-teaching in ELA, Social Studies, Math, and Science, to promote on-the-spot, well-planned, well-coordinated with the gen ed teacher lessons and classroom experiences. This comes with a savings in place of the, in, we would replace 21 and 1/2 hours of teaching assistant time with these three classroom teachers. And our remaining TAs in those programs would actually have the opportunity to push into our special area classrooms, our music technology, where they currently have no help. So this is a model that expands our co-teaching, provides more supports to students, and does it in a, in a cost-effective way that actually has the added benefit of providing supports in our special area classes as well. It's also a textbook year in the middle school. I don't believe we've ever spoken quite so much about textbooks, but I think the, the reality is, our budgets have been so tight in past years, we have put off sometimes these kinds of purchases in order to hang on to programs. But our social studies textbooks at the middle school were written in 1998, a lot has happened since 1998. One of the things that's happened is we now have a one-to-one environment, and we have school-issued Chromebooks. So we are proposing the purchase of an online subscription-based textbook that has continuously updated multimedia resources for, starting next year. And this purchase, just like the math, we costed out using several years of subscription time, and for six years, the total cost is $107,659. That's $16.70 per pupil per year, compared to a four-year subscription, which is $21.39 per pupil per year. So again, more expensive right up front, or so it seems, but actually far more cost-effective over time. And we're very concerned about that sustainable overtime element of, of our work here. At the high school, three relatively small changes here. One is the continuation of .1 FTE, so we can continue to offer advanced placement art. We used an unassigned to support that program for this year, and we would like to carry that forward into 1920. American Sign Language, too. As you know, we began American Sign Language I this year, and we have a room full of students, 20-plus, who I actually sat in on a lesson with them a few weeks ago, who are tremendously accomplished at the first level of Sign Language I. And I asked them, and I had to ask with my voice, because I didn't know any of the signs, how many of you would like to go on to II? And it's very popular. So we need to provide that opportunity so they can continue their learning. And then lastly, at the high school, we participate in a regional summer school. Those costs per course appear to be going up, and we do anticipate some enrollment growth, so we have projected a $16,590 increase. District-wide, we have a few other changes. We have a Coda, a Certified Occupational Therapist Assistant, who is retiring, and we would like to replace the position with a Licensed Occupational Therapist. It costs a tad more, but Codas need to be supervised by licensed individuals, so if we just hire a licensed person, we eliminate that supervision piece, and then we maximize that individual's availability to provide service to students, conduct evaluations, and this also maximizes our Medicaid. The next item is our Extended School Year Principal. This is really not a change in anything other than the funding source for the, for the salary. We used to pay this out of a federal grant. Federal grant rules change, and we can no longer do that, so the $12,000 that we pay for our summer school principal for special education will now come out of the general fund. And then the last one, we are, have been asked by the town to pick up a greater proportion of the cost of the school resource officer. Mr. Sanders and I met with the town supervisor and the police chief back in the fall, and then again later on. And so this number, we're still, you can see the little squiggly line, we're still working on that a bit, it is an anticipated cost, but the expectation is that we would pick up 50% of the salary and benefits of the SRO. We're currently at about 30% in that cost. Couple more district-wide changes. We have a computer hardware district replacement plan. Every year we replace hardware, this year for next year, we plan on replacing document cameras, some of the equipment in the tech ed department at Farnsworth, some multimedia carts, and others. This is, this is $24,000 less than we currently spend, so we're spending less on technology hardware in the plan for next year. However, we do need to spend more for data processing equipment, and this is for our security devices and systems, firewalls, and those kinds of safeguards. And then this last pair, work together. We are transitioning away from a consultant to provide services for our network at a savings of $36,000, and bringing that work back to an existing employee who will have a title change and get some training and an increase in salary in order to do that work in-house. Couple more, we have, in the world of athletics, we, we have two sets of soccer goals that need to be replaced. The ones at Farnsworth are broken and beyond repair, and the high school are not far behind. So we're needing to do that for the coming year. And lastly, here in our communications committee meeting last week, we talked about adding an additional day of communication service to our BOCs communication service. We currently have four days a week. Many of our suburban council counterparts have five, six, seven, and we would very much like to be able to use the additional day to increase our social media presence, to continue to populate our website with accessible material. We hear a lot about people wanting to find things there, and, and as well as do some additional projects. The cost is $23,340, and it's addable at approximately 50%. And I know when we report out at the communications time, we can talk some more about that. The next few slides here, I want to talk about some proposals around instructional leadership. And the first, I want to talk a little bit about restructuring one of our instructional administrator positions. Our current instructional administrator for music, who also supervises business, Lori Hirschenhardt, she sadly is retiring at the end of this year. She has done an amazing job with our music program and with our business program, and she will be, to say difficult to replace is an understatement. So as we think about the challenge of doing that, we would like to propose that we restructure that position so that the full 1.0 is for our music program, and that we would shift the business portion of that assignment over to our instructional administrator for art, who has a business background, who is currently .6. And we'd also propose to shift family and consumer science, FACS as we call it, HOMEC if you're of a certain generation, which is currently supervised by Mr. Lester, our high school principal. We'd like to shift that over to our IA for art as well, and turn that IA position into a 1.0 FTE. So why do we want to do this? I don't have to tell you how highly valued our music program is in Gilderland, our, our music parents, our, our students, it's just a humongous program, it's well-regarded, we win awards all the time. Our new administrator will likely be entry-level, just beginning, and will need to put his or her full attention, I think, on that program. Similarly, our business program is also highly valued and growing, particularly as we think about school-to-work opportunities for students. And FACS is another content area that is undergoing significant changes, it has new standards, it is rethinking how it is unfolding. So it, it seems like we're at a perfect place to say, let's give these areas that we value the support that they need. So because our IA for art, Shannon, who's sitting here, I'm embarrassing her, I'm sure, has a strong business, background in business and an eye for these things, we think this is a great opportunity to really solve a lot of problems and challenges and create some opportunities. And then the next piece I alluded to a little bit earlier, and this is around the notion of the restoration and creation of teacher-leader positions, as we call this, teacher leaders in the era of ESSA. The first column, the one on the left, talks about restoring teacher-leader positions. Many of you might remember those very, very dark years of the budget when we were making just very difficult reductions all over the place, and, and teacher-leader positions were one of them, and if I had a dollar for every time Damian told me how much he regretted that recommendation, we could probably meet our tax levy limit calculation. And every year, he has said, I'm bringing them back, I'm bringing them back, and every year, for whatever reason, we have not had the resources in order to do it. This year, because of the changing rules under ESSA and our ability to fund these through Title II, which is not a general fund pot of money, we are able to recommend them. Title II, which is not a general fund pot of money, we are able to recommend this, and in fact, add a savings to our general fund. So our proposal here is to restore the teacher-leader positions that you see on the left and to add some additional on the right, so that we are focusing in on our technology, world language, career in tech, special ed, ENL, and our social services program and our therapy doc program. So all of this is a cost of $59,500. It's through federal grants. It's the grants that are encouraging us to do this kind of work, and it's a net savings to the general fund budget, as I said, of $17,500. A few non-instructional changes, and I'll go quickly on these. Mr. Sanders already mentioned them, but transportation is the big piece. He already alluded, every day, we drive students to 65 locations other than our seven school buildings. Private charter, BOSI's, private special education, job sites for school-to-work, not to mention field trips, sports trips. We have buses going in a thousand directions. That compounded with the ongoing driver shortage has resulted in the need to contract out to get our students where they need to go, and we've done that for our out-of-district locations. So in 2018, 19, the year we're in right now, we had an additional $700,000 in costs related to contracted transportation services, and we need to plan for that going forward. You already saw that in an earlier slide. We've budgeted $677,000 to do that. It is offset by the reduction of two FTEs from the bus driver pool and one FTE for a bus attendant position. We can't fill these positions anyway. It's very, very difficult. So here we are, coming to what would we recommend, or what might happen should we get some additional resources? And honestly, the only option we have for additional resources would come through the state budget process, and whether or not we end up getting any additional aid from the state. Here are some ideas of things that we think are worthy of consideration. One thing that is not in the budget is the provision to provide an opportunity for something we call literacy lessons for elementary special education teachers to provide reading instruction. We have been doing this training right along in some of our buildings. We would like to continue it. If we had some additional resources, that would be something that we would like to have considered. In light of the public comment, I've also included here, is there some interest in including some additional slots at Tech Valley High School? I do think, I agree with the speaker, it is worth a visit over there. It is a very different kind of place, and the way they think about engaging students in their teaching and learning is unique, very multidisciplinary. Yes, there's a lot of tech, but it's less tech than you would think. It's really about a way of thinking about learning that's more project-based. So depending on how many slots we would consider, we have the TBD. I've also included here, we've had some requests for furniture at FMS and GHS. These are cafeteria tables at the middle level, classroom desks at the high school. I know that both of those buildings would appreciate that. And then the last thing hearkens back to Mr. Sanders' comment about our need to consider our reserves. One other option, should we have some additional aid come our way, is to use less of our fund balance to close the revenue portion of our budget. Again, to be determined. This just summarizes the changes in FTEs, both at the elementary, middle, high school, and district-wide, across those titles. You can see there's very little change overall. And I'll just point out, we continue to carry five FTEs of unassigned teachers and five also for unassigned teaching assistants. All right. So this is not new. This is basic thinking around putting together a spending plan. We're always trying to balance the mission and our resources. So we put kids first. We think about the long run. We are very respectful of our community. We listen to their priorities. We respect the taxpayers. We're mindful of that tax levy limit. We recognize, and if you're hearing the news, people are starting to talk about the economy taking a downturn. So I think we'll continue to operate with fiscal uncertainty going forward. We need to be mindful of that. And then in this immediate budget development, there are still unknowns that will affect what we do here, and the biggest is whatever will happen with the state budget. So we'll be keeping a close eye on that. So next steps. Next week on the 12th, we will have an entire meeting devoted to give the board and community an opportunity to ask questions about all these things you've heard about tonight. Just as an aside, we'll use that time not only to ask questions about the budget, but also about our capital project. And then going forward, we have a regular board meeting on March 19th. Public comments always welcome. Our board workshop is April 2nd. Board adoption of the budget is April 9th, and we start here every evening at 7:00 p.m. when we have a meeting. And then from there, we will be getting out to talk with our local organizations and parent groups, and using our various social media and other channels to get word out about the budget. Formal hearing is May 7th. The vote is May 21st, all five of our elementary buildings, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And our website is always the best place to go for lots of additional information. I say questions here. Happy to take a couple, but I just remind you that we do have a whole evening planned to dive in to things that we presented tonight and the materials that you received at your tables as well. Having said that, are there any questions? John?
You know, not specifically on the budget, but I'm looking at the enrollments. I noticed that the survival ratios for K to 1, 1 to 2, 2 to 3 are significantly higher than other survival ratios across the district. Is there a reason for that? And then I look at the kindergarten numbers, too, and I see that, you know, it's sort of going against itself in some ways. And I'm wondering if there's some insight on what's going on there.
We'll let Neil talk about survival.
Sorry to put you to sleep.
I haven't looked at them in a little while now, so I have to talk off the top of my head a little bit. But what we do use is birth data in order to get those kindergarten ratios from five years earlier. So we're looking at county data and keeping a history of how many of those students that are born in a particular year actually end up in our schools five years later. So that's historical data to build the kindergarten number. That's the best information. We have to do that going forward into first grade and second grade and so on. We're looking at history of survival rates, as you mentioned. How many students in the preceding grade level advance to the following grade level over time, and what's that average? I do a little tweaking, and when I look at the numbers, I'm looking at five, five and seven years typically, well, three, five, and seven. If there's any discernible change in terms of something's happening in the short term, I might go shorter. If something seems to be pretty stable, I might go to a five or seven year, try to capture what might be happening in terms of growth spurts. It's very difficult, as you can imagine, at the elementary level to know, you know, how sustainable that is over time when you sometimes have these staggered jumps. They may start and they may end. And so it's just a judgment call when I do them, just analyzing the data and trying to figure out what best represents the current pattern going forward for future years, and look at it again every single year in terms of what that next cohort of data looks like and how that should be projected forward.
All right, thank you. I realize it's difficult trying to read the crystal ball, having done projections myself for school enrollment, so it's one thing that I guess sort of stood out, so.
Okay, I can take another look at that.
All right, yeah, thank you.
I haven't looked at that since the fall, but certainly do that.
It looks like Barbara has a question.
I did. I'm wondering if you could comment on the middle school technology program. We had talked for a number of years of updating that program, and I thought we were in the process of taking a real good look at that. I don't see changes for next year for the middle school technology program.
So the middle school technology program, Barbara, I mentioned this, I don't recall when, but it was a couple of months ago, we talked about this. The middle school technology department and Bev Bisnet opted to go with a Vex robotics program, which would introduce a greater amount of coding to the middle school tech ed program. We were actually able to get that kick-started this year under this year's budget with some remaining textbook funds. So they are underway with that, so you're not seeing it in next year's budget because we were able to work it in this year.
Fantastic, thank you.
Sure.
Ben?
How much did you say that we currently share with the SRO? What share of the cost we have?
We'll have to get the exact number. I had that piece of paper with me and didn't bring it with me. It's about $30,000 per year.
That we pay?
That we pay.
Okay.
But we can pull that up. And my hope is that when we're together next week, we'll have the actual number from the town.
Sign language, does that satisfy SED graduation foreign language requirements?
Yes.
Can you go back to the reassessment impact? I don't know if Neil, I don't know if you can explain it, Neil, like an eighth-grade level to me, because I think I understand it, and I know that it keeps coming up as questions. It would just be helpful to have it re-explained lower level for me.
Let me take another stab at it.
Yeah.
Okay. I think conceptually, and this is what we're trying to do here, is just give you a conceptual picture of the impact. And again, the one thing that most people fail to realize is if you have a reassessment, the assessed values are going to go up, property values are going up, and the basic assumption is my home value's going up and my tax rate's going to go up from what it is in the current year. So not only is my assessment going to go up, but I'm guessing my tax rate's going to go up, and I'm going to have a huge increase in my school tax bill. So what we're trying to do is get to the conceptual picture that when you have increasing assessed values, what that has the effect of doing is lowering the tax rates. So, and again, when you think about it conceptually, we're taking a tax levy, and that's the amount of money that we need to raise from taxpayers, our 72.3 million. We're going to increase that by some number less than 2%. What we know, at least from the information the town has sent out, is the assessments are going up by a lot more than 2%. So again, you have a much broader tax base now that you're spreading a fixed dollar amount across. So when you have that greater assessment, same number of dollars or similar number of dollars that you're trying to raise, invariably the rate can be lower for a thousand to generate the same amount of tax dollars because you have more taxable property, more assessed property. But this has been shown historically. I know it's still not working maybe for you, but.
No, no, that was a lot better.
Historically, this is the way revaluations work. The town of Bethlehem has done one more recently, but the same idea, tax rates fall as property values rise. You don't get hit on both ends.
Thank you. It basically puts everyone on the same playing field.
I'm sorry?
It basically puts everyone on the same playing field.
Yeah, property values are now equalized, so in essence, you're not, one neighbor's not subsidizing another if their property hasn't been reassessed in a while, and you came and bought your house a year ago. You're paying higher taxes because you have a higher assessed value. Tax rate's the same for every property owner across the district. So you do have this imbalance of some taxpayers subsidizing other taxpayers. So the purpose, one of the purposes is to get everybody back on a level playing field and person paying their appropriate share and not subsidizing other taxpayers in the community.
I just had one more question. That new social development class, is that at all of the elementary schools, or is that?
It would be one classroom that would serve the entire district.
Oh, okay. And then where is that going to be like now?
The location is, we haven't determined the location yet. We've got to, you saw all the moving parts with our classroom sections, so we've got to figure out the building that would have the space for it.
Thank you.
To go back to the revaluation part, we were talking earlier today about helping people understand that concept because it is just, it's complicated. Do you remember when we first had the tax levy limit, and BOSI's put together like a three-minute video that explained how that worked? I'm thinking there might be some wisdom in having a couple-minute little video that we can spread out to our community to say, this is how it works, and this is what the impact will be. Because I think it's terrible timing for that misconception of this is simply going to mean more, when you look at the example back from '04, '05, the value could go up $67,000 before you would actually see an increase in your actual taxes paid. So anyway, just sharing the idea. I haven't done anything about it yet. We were just talking about it a little bit today, but it seems like it might be helpful.
I think so, because there's a lot of misconceptions. I feel like, you know, people are talking about it, so.
Yes, they are, yes. Ironically, the numbers are close. Our tax rate now is, prior to the assessment, 2018 was around $23 per thousand. School tax rate for next year, if you look at that chart you got in your letter over the weekend, is $16, so it's actually going down further. We need to work on helping people understand that. Sean?
I would agree, because I spent a couple of social media posts the other day with screenshots of charts and graphs to try to help people. On the proposed changes where we have an employee, are those values salary alone, or are they salary plus benefits?
Just the salaries.
Okay, just so, yeah, like I'm looking at slide 35.
The benefit may not have needed to be counted because we're already paying the benefit.
Okay, so like where we have the new 813 class, we identify one new teacher FTE, cost of 81.5, that's just salary?
No, no, that's salary and benefit.
Okay, thank you.
That's a whole new employee.
Okay, thank you.
Ken?
I just had a question on the Appendix B in the white packet that we have for the enrollment and class size. It's based on, or at least appears to be based on, enrollment as of October 3rd, 2018. Is there any reason why we can't get like January or a more current number just to see like the change in the fluctuation that maybe has occurred throughout the school year?
We certainly could, and we do look at some of that data, as we talked about, in terms of reaching out to schools and principals are providing that information throughout the year, particularly at the elementary level, in terms of where are my class sizes and anticipated enrollments. The reason we settle on October is we have something called Beds Day. It's New York State Basic Educational Data Collection Day. So we have everybody count their students in classrooms. You're probably very familiar with this process, Tim. So we know the number is certain in terms of what we have, and that matches up with the state, and it's a formal accounting process of students. So from that point forward, what we're really doing is looking at more ancillary data as it occurs on a day-to-day basis. And you know, from your experience as well as a teacher, kid could be here today and be not here a month from now, or somebody new moves in, and a family moves in, and there's six kids and twins in second grade and all of those sorts of things. But we do do that monitoring. We have a Google Doc where principals continue to update their data so we can get a handle on that section. But for purposes of illustration, we try to keep the data consistent from year to year, so we're not looking at, you know, how was it compared to a year ago when we're arbitrarily maybe picking dates to look at data again.
All right, yeah. I just think it's important so we can focus on class size, since that's a biggie for us.
By the time we do budget adoption, we will have, we do go back to that live, more live data.
Okay. All right, thank you.
It looks like Barbara might have another question.
I just have a quick one for Neil. What entity or entities are providing us with a pilot payment? Are they a hotel or one of the living facilities?
It's a senior assisted living facility, the Promenade at University Place. It's the only pilot agreement that's in our school district.
Oh, okay, so the hotel doesn't provide a. Okay, so the hotel doesn't provide us with anything?
No, they were not, if you're talking about the Cross Gates Hotel?
Yes.
Yeah, they were not granted any tax reduction or payment in lieu of taxes.
Thank you.
Any other questions this evening? Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the February ninth, or February eleventh, two thousand nineteen meeting, CPSC and CSE recommendations, personnel action items, and the financials. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Sean, second, Tim. Are there any questions or comments on this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is nine zero. So now we will move on to information items, curriculum and instruction. Damian?
Thanks very much. I have some news from the art department. We would like to extend congratulations to eighth grade students Ava Bauer, Kathleen Gao, and Nicolina Rush. These students received an honorable, honorable mention in the two thousand nineteen Region At Large New York State Scholastic Art Competition. So some great news. Additionally, we have several students who are, or have participated in the New York State English Council and you've met some of these students. They actually came and shared with us a couple of weeks ago. So congratulations to GHS students, Hishira Brown, Iulius Niegel, Cole Cornfield, and Hannah Mazuka, who presented at the New York State English Council Conference and the January Board of Education meeting. And they have now been invited to present at the Buffalo State University School of Education on Thursday, May ninth. And if you remember, they were the students who spoke about the work they were doing in Chris Mazur's English class around civil discourse. So they're on the road, they're moving. And I have several textbooks for your information tonight. All of them are math-related. So the first is Computer Science Illuminated, Sixth Edition by Dale Nell and Lewis John for Use in Computer Programming of the Python Language. We also have Introduction to Computer and Programming in Python. It's a multimedia approach by Guzdel, Mark J., and Erickson Barbara for use in the computer program Python as well. And then the big one, which I will elaborate further on in just a moment, is Investigations Three by the Technical Education Research Center, or TERC. Senior authors are Keith Cochran, Karen Economopolis, that's a great Greek name, Arush Hollister, Megan Murray, Susan Jo Russell, Deborah Shifter, and this is for use in K through five mathematics. And we will be seeking your approval at the March nineteenth meeting for those books. And let me expand upon the third recommendations for you and give you a little bit more information about where we're going with the elementary math program. So if you recall, on September eleventh, I gave an update to the board about the pilot process that was to be used during the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. And this was to review and select a replacement for our K through five math program. So please recall that it had been over several, seven years since our last mathematics program modifications and adoption at the elementary level. At the time, New York State had adopted the Common Core learning standards and new expectations for student learning. In turn, the district aligns its programs to these new expectations. Of course, since that time, New York State has again revised learning standards and replaced the Common Core standards with, with the next generation learning standards. Additionally, instructional practices have evolved which have demanded greater focus on student inquiry, problem solving, and discourse in the classroom. As such, we're very excited to inform you that we've fully evaluated program options and we're recommending to the Board of Education the adoption of the Investigations Three for implementation in September of the nineteen-twenty school year. In addition to the extensive research, site visits, review by our math cabinet, we had over twenty teachers volunteer to participate in the pilot effort. We're very excited to proceed, we're eager to make improvements to our mathematics program, and we intend to begin the training of our elementary teachers this spring with ongoing training and professional development throughout the next school year. Our pilot teachers have also provided suggestions and tips for their colleagues who will be implementing investigations for the first time. And again, I cannot thank them enough for their, their leadership, their pioneer spirit, the time they took to pilot the program. We actually just met with all of them Monday afternoon and they will be deeply involved with the professional development and the rollout of the program as well. So again, I thank them immensely. They've been invaluable in the process. And the recommendation is there for you and the information about the program as well. It would have required a hand truck to bring everything down, so I just brought down one third grade book. If you want to take a look at it, you can get a sense of what it is, but I do have stacks of all of the grade levels back in my office as well.
Any questions for Damian? Teresa?
Since we're moving away from the Go Math program, thankfully, can you give us any sort of an idea of the different way of thinking with the math that is going to benefit our kids? Because the Go Math program is just...
Yeah, I mean, that's a big question. That's a big question, a tough one to answer, but I think that the greatest appeal to us for the investigations program was really the problem-solving focus, the very inquiry-based focus. It's very much designed to have students engaged in discussion and conversation around the conceptual understanding of mathematics. I think Go Math had some far more traditional approaches. It was a bit more rigid in nature and it was somewhat traditional, I would say, in many regards. Not exactly what kids are being called upon to do right now and what they will be called upon to do in the future. So those are the three big shifts that I would say come to mind. The pilot teachers absolutely have loved it. They have been raving about it. They have been providing us with great feedback about students and how they're responding to the program. I can just cite for you a couple of quotes from kids about how, for the first time, they feel like they understand math and they get math and that they, you know, they're very confident with what they're doing in math, which of course, confidence in math is really paramount. It's incredibly important, so we're looking forward to it. In all honesty, when we selected that as one of the programs that we were going to take a look at, that was kind of our wild card program because it was such a shift away from where Go Math is. We knew full well going into it that it would require a lot of professional development and support of teachers. But I will say, from my own view of it, I'm absolutely thrilled with where we landed because it was by far my favorite one to begin with. So I'm glad the pilot teachers saw it the same way and that's where we've landed.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Damian. Now we move to superintendent information. Murray?
Okay, thank you. My first item is a reminder about the two upcoming musicals. Farnsworth Mask will be presenting Shrek Jr. based on the Oscar-winning DreamWorks Animation film. Performances will be held Friday, March eighth through Sunday, March tenth. Friday and Saturday, the performances are at seven PM. Sunday performance is at two. Tickets are sold in the Farnsworth Cafeteria during lunch shifts for pre-sale at eight dollars. Reservation requests can be sent to FMSmask@gilderlandschools.net and tickets can be picked up at the door and they'll be nine dollars. The Gilderland Players cast, crew, and orchestra are presenting the musical based on the novel by Victor Hugo, Les Misérables, on March fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen at seven PM. And on Sunday, March seventeenth at two PM. Prices vary between five and ten dollars depending on your seating selection. And to reserve tickets, please call five one eight eight six one eight five nine one extension six two zero two and leave a message. So don't miss those, they will be fantastic.
As always.
My next item, this seems, February, March seems to be the conference season for superintendents. In mid-February, I was in Los Angeles for the Association of School Administrators Winter Meeting and the Governing Board Meeting there. I had shared a little bit with you about the value of that conference. I'll just hit one highlight because it'll tie to my NISCUS conference. Bill Daggett was one of the keynote presenters at AASA and spent an hour talking about the future and what schools need to be thinking about to better prepare for students for the future. I wrote to him, asking him for his PowerPoint slides and he sent them along, so I will share them with all of you. Really encouraging us all to think about the, not what we know, but what our students will know. And then ironically, I just got done with the New York State Council of School Superintendent's Conference and there, the title of that was Next Gen Leadership. And a lot of the conversations at this conference also focused around how do we shift what we do in schools to better prepare students for the future? The other piece I want to mention about the NISCUS conference because it's timely around our budget is that this was our advocacy conference as well and we had the opportunity to meet the new Senate Education Chair, Shelley Meyer, who spoke to the group, I think it was Sunday, it might have been Monday, I've lost track at this point. But she was extremely well-versed on the educational issues that we are struggling with right now. She had a great understanding of foundation aid, but also expense-driven aids, the conundrums around the tax levy limit calculation, and the crazy things that pilot agreements can do to tax levy limit calculations. So she seemed very interested in listening to us, but also quite capable of making strong arguments in order to support public schools. So it was a, it was a real highlight. There were lots of other really good things, but I'm, I'm mindful of the time. My next item is the joint trustee meeting with the Gilderland Public Library and the Public Library Board met last week. And it turns out that March fourteenth at six PM is the date that works best for them. So I offer that day for our meeting. We typically meet at the library and have an agenda comprised of topics of mutual interest and I'll work with the director to put that together and we'll go from there. So we had three people signed up for that and I don't have my sheet here, but I know we had three. I think Tim, Teresa, and...
I think maybe me.
Judy, and maybe Barbara too.
Seven o'clock?
Six o'clock. I'll send a reminder. So six PM, March fourteenth, agenda to come. Next, I want to provide a bit of an update on the Focus Program. As you know from my Friday updates in the last couple of months, the high school has been looking at the Focus Program to make some structural changes largely in response to some pretty significant drops in enrollment in that program. And really an interest in finding ways to help the program grow and thrive and survive. So I more want to focus on kind of where we have landed rather than the long journey to get there. Two important pieces, I want to thank Dan Penna and his team, but also Mike Piscatelli and the high school leadership team for jointly putting together some forums whereby students could share their insights and perspectives about the Focus Program. And then most recently, we had some faculty and former faculty do the same. And the, the one change that I think concerned students and faculty the most was the proposed elimination of the Focus-only student sections of English in Social Studies at tenth and eleventh grade. So hearing that, what Mr. Piscatelli and his team have proposed is that we maintain, we hang on to those eleventh grade Social Studies and English courses for the eleventh graders because those youngsters are in the program, they were brought into the program with the expectation that that would be their pathway going through. And so we would propose keeping that in place, but not offering them at the tenth grade level. Also, a major change would be to open the program up to ninth grade students. And there was quite a bit of discussion around that, but as Mr. Laster has shared with me, there are eighth grade students who would benefit from the supports that come with the Focus Program as they entered this, you know, very large high school. So I think following our discussion with the faculty last week, there is some recognition that it's probably a good thing not to have students struggle for a whole year before they have an opportunity to get the level of support that they need. The last piece that I'll say, and I'll take questions, or Mike can to if he wants to, is that we will commit to doing some very pointed evaluation next year. So as we make a change, how is it going? I mean, are we serving students well? Are we meeting their needs? Are we growing enrollment? So if it turns out at this time next year that it was a terrible idea, we will review it. If it turns out to be a good idea, then we will continue to tweak in order to improve it. The goal here though is that we recognize that there are students who benefit from the social emotional supports that come as part of the Focus Program and we want to make sure we hang on to those. Questions? And last but not least, our school start time task force has been hard at work right along. We've had the large group recently met, but there are subgroups who have also been doing some work along the way. The most recent meeting of the large group included the presentation of seven potential options for rethinking start times at essentially elementary, middle, and high school levels. We had a, I would say a robust, but thoughtful conversation about the seven options as the snow fell around us. It was one of those many stormy days we had. Where we are now, that group narrowed the seven options down to four or five because one of the options got tweaked a little bit. And all of those options are now in the hands of Danielle Poirier, who's looking at them through the lens of the transportation because each and every one of the options is really contingent on what we can do in terms of transporting students in a timely way and efficiently. So she will be, she's looking at them now. We may need to reach out to Versatrans to get some more detailed analysis. She's going to meet with the district office team in, next week to give us her preliminary review and then we'll get the task force back together and we'll continue. So we will present more defined options to the board later this spring and then we'll begin reaching out to our community to get feedback and so on as we go forward. But the work is going very well, team's been great, and stay tuned.
Questions? Thank you, Murray.
Sure.
Now we move to board president information items. There's several this evening. And the first is related to the upcoming Board of Education election. Petitions are available through the district clerk for any district resident who might be considering running for the Board of Education. There are three three-year terms on the board that expire June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. In order to be eligible to run for the Board of Education, nominating petitions with thirty-nine or more signatures from qualified voters in the district must be submitted to the district clerk on or before Monday, April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen at five PM. Anyone who has questions about the duties and responsibilities of a board member may contact the superintendent, board president, or any current member of the Board of Education. A candidate must be able to read and write, be at least eighteen years of age, a qualified voter, and a district resident for at least one year prior to the date of the vote, which is on Tuesday, May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. Further qualifications and information is in the packet available through the district The second item relates to the Capital Region BOSI's annual meeting. The annual meeting of the Capital Region BOSI's is scheduled for Tuesday, April second, two thousand nineteen. Reservations to attend this meeting are due by noon on Wednesday, March twentieth, two thousand nineteen. If board members are interested in attending, please let Board Clerk Linda Livingston know. For your information, the date of Wednesday, April seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, at our special board meeting that takes place at eight AM, is the date selected to vote on the two thousand nineteen-twenty Board of Cooperative Educational Services budget and election.
Christine?
Yes?
The one thing that's a disappointment to me that we should note is April second, we also have our budget meeting here, so it'd be very difficult to go, which is too bad because it's really a nice evening.
Good point.
I did let them know over BOSI's.
Okay, okay. Because we're usually very well represented there, Tim.
Yeah, we do. The third item relates to the BOSI's board nominations. The BOSI's board is looking to fill four seats that are open for election on April seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. These are three-year terms, two of which have tip, have been typically held by an Albany County resident and two others that, in keeping with the practice, will go to Schuahery County residents. Nominations are due by March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. And the final item is just another reminder that next Tuesday, March twelfth, we'll have a meeting to discuss the budget as well as the capital project. We've received a couple of questions or a couple of suggestions come in via email so far, so if you want to continue to send those, that would be great so that people can prepare in advance of that meeting. And now we move down to action items. School business management... School Business Management, Neil?
First item this evening is a resolution for the School District to consent to the designation of the Gilderland Public Library as lead agency for purposes of the State Environmental Quality Review Act with respect to proposed renovations and additions to the existing library building. Why the Board needs to act on this is that in cases where there's multiple agencies that have jurisdictional control over the area of construction, it could be a county and a town, or in this case, School District and Library, because the library was formed as a School District Library. We also have some jurisdictional rights here. DEC, Department of Environmental Conservation, requires that one of those agencies be designated as lead for purposes of this act. Since the library has tended to operate independent of the School District in terms of its day-to-day operations and its finances and in terms of its maintenance of facilities, recommendation is to allow them to be the lead in this particular aspect of work or a project that they're proposing.
May I have a motion to approve the designation of the Gilderland Public Library as the lead agency? Ben, second. Sean, are there any questions or comments on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine-zero.
Next, this is a resolution to authorize the school bus annual bond proposition for the 2019 school budget vote and election. I want everybody to roll call vote is required, but just to refresh everybody's memory, we do have a proposal that would purchase 766 passenger buses, 135-passenger bus, and 112-passenger with three-wheel char station bus for a total cost of $939,400. This was reviewed by the Business Practices Committee and recommended to the Board. The Board has reserved, reviewed it as well, and now we're at the point of adopting a resolution to go forward and authorize the bonding for that purchase.
So, this is a roll call vote. We need a motion to approve the resolution. Teresa, second. Judy? Questions or comments? Okay.
This is Frederico.
Barbara, you muted yourself.
This is Gita.
Yes.
Mr. Goze.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Holland.
Yes.
Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Dr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mrs. Slatt.
Yes.
And Mrs. Follier.
Yes.
Thank you, Linda.
Next, we are back to the State Environmental Quality Review Act again. This is a resolution that does require a roll call vote as well, and this is related to the radon mitigation project that I spoke of earlier during the presentation here at the high school. In this case, we are the lead agency and the only agency. Our architects and consultants have looked at this and have determined, in terms of their professional guidance, that with the work involved, there is no environmental impact that we have to proceed with in terms of mitigation efforts. And typically, that would only occur if we were moving earth somewhere in this process, which we're not. The work is going to be combined to the existing building and the existing footprint.
This, again, as you said, will require a roll call vote. May I have a motion to approve this resolution? Ben, second. Seema, questions or comments? Okay, Linda?
This is Frederico.
Yes.
This is Gita.
Yes.
Mr. Goze.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
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 Dr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mrs. Slatt.
Yes.
And Mrs. Follier.
Yes.
Okay, and then finally, this evening, we have an emergency sheltering agreement with Our Lady of Mercy's Life Center, and this is to establish an emergency evacuation shelter for the residents and staff. This agreement's been approved by the Boards in the past, but periodically we do like to keep these updated just to make sure everybody's on the same page, knowing what they need to do in terms of emergency and what everybody's committed to so they can prepare for the emergency.
May I have a motion to approve the agreement? Teresa, second. Judy, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine-zero. Thank you, Neil. Now, we move to superintendent action items. Murray?
Thank you. I have just one action item tonight, and this is a resolution to authorize the execution of a proposed memorandum of agreement between the Gilderland Central School District and the Gilderland Teachers Association, and this is related to the work we've been doing around longevity meetings.
May I have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement? Tim, second. Judy, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine-zero. Thank you, Murray.
Thank you.
Now, we move to Board President information, or action items. We have one this evening, which is the policy that was up for review for first read at the last meeting. That's the alcohol and drug testing of drivers. May I have a motion to approve the policy? Ben, second. Tim, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine-zero. Now, we move down to Board Committee Reports Audit. We haven't met since our previous meeting. Business Practices?
We have not met since our last meeting.
Communications?
We met last week. Two items of probably importance. One, we continue to discuss the Board Development Retreat that spurred into a little bit more of a discussion on overall strategic planning, I think, you know, for the, for the district. So, I did ask that we have some additional information to consider at our next meeting coming up this month, and so we'll take a look at that. We're going to revisit what would have been done in the past in that area. And then we also further talked about what we're going to do moving forward with a one-day or the, the Board Development Retreat or workshop that we haven't yet pulled together, and there's some challenges associated with that, but it all sort of wraps in together. So, we'll continue to move down that path. The other thing that we looked at was a, was we were asked to consider an increase to the BOCES Communication Service. So, right now, we have a, we use the BOCES Communication Service on enhanced four-day arrangement, and so there is an interest, and Dr. Wiles talked about her thoughts and suggestions and recommendations for adding a fifth day to that service, and that was what was reviewed in the proposed budget. We saw that was an increase of, I think, $26,000 and change there with about 50% of that aidable back to the district. So, I think that's something that we have to discuss. I don't know if we want to discuss it in the confines of the Communication Committee Report, or if we want to hold that as we discuss more about the budget development. I sort of leave that to the pleasure of the, my little Board members.
Does anybody want to talk about that now, or do you want to talk about it on the 12th when we talk more generally about the budget, since it was included there?
It seems to me that that would be an appropriate time. Maybe, I don't know if people need to have a little more information, but that would be, I think, good.
I can share the, Aubrey put together a packet of information for the committee members that we looked at on the 28th when we met that includes what would we do with the additional time, and I'll share all that with everyone on Friday.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Policy Committee, Barbara?
I've not met since our last meeting.
Public comment number two. Linda, has anybody signed up? Okay. Now, we move to Board Issues, Ideas, and Sharing. Does anybody have anything this evening?
Could I, I just have a quick comment. On February 19th, I believe, it was the 74th anniversary of the landing at Iwo Jima, and Cindy Pollard, who owns the Homefront Cafe, invited veterans who are still alive, who are now well into their 90s, to come and be there and be honored, and she asked if we could have some students who would be interested in coming. So, I spoke to Marie, whose father was also one of the people who was the Iwo Jima, and she spoke to Alex, and he brought eight children, this was eight students, this was during vacation, and to watch them interact with these American heroes was wonderful. I was so proud of them. They had good questions. They were very interested in what these gentlemen could, could say, and they were such, it was such an excellent representation of what's good about our school and our students, and I was just very proud. Cindy herself was, was just thrilled, and it was wonderful. And in fact, Alex went with these students and, being a veteran himself, and was able to hook up with another veteran who told him about meetings and things so that that will enrich him, too. It was a wonderful experience, so I was very proud of the kids.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so then we need a motion to go into Executive Session to discuss matters leading to the potential tenure appointments of certain individuals and to discuss parameters pertaining to the Board's strategy with respect to negotiations with the Gilderland Teachers Association Teaching Assistance Unit and the Gilderland Office Workers Association. May I have a motion? Teresa, second. Seema, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.